Good morning. Brent called the meeting to order. Mr. Brett, would you lead us in prayer today?
Certainly. Father, during this beautiful time of Thanksgiving, help us to be more thankful. Help us to realize the many blessings that you shower on us every day. Thank us for our family. We're thankful for our health, our friends, our jobs. Please remember all those who are serving overseas, putting their lives on the line every day. We're thankful for them. Keep all of us safe during our journeys this week, as many of us are going to be on the road to travel family, to see family, and for family coming in. So, thank you for everything. Help us to be thankful, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting first?
Preliminary matters first.
Preliminary matters. I can't, I'm not even...
Mr. Chairman, just before we start, there was a change. We finished a search process for the leader of the manufacturing grant, and we'd like to add that name to the personnel agenda so that we can confirm it today.
Yes, sir.
Gary Graham. And, thank you very much. I'd like to ask Nina Winters to come forward.
Thank you, Chair.
Nina Winters began her career at St. Petersburg College in 2008 as the Palladium Accounting Manager, the same position she holds today. And whereas Ms. Winters brought to the Palladium excellent accounting skills in addition to a pension for accuracy, honesty, good judgment, and attention to detail, she also brought kindness and a warm personality which generated many friends for the Palladium. And whereas Mrs. Winters kept the Palladium staff financially on task while at the same time showing appreciation for their individual efforts and enthusiasm, and whereas Mrs. Winters followed through on every project, including the finalization of Palladium contracts which often required numerous phone calls and trips to other campuses, now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Nina Winters and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment through the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 20th day of November 2012. Here, here.
Congratulations.
I've enjoyed this so much. It's been a wonderful journey being here and learning a lot from everyone, and I'm going to miss it, but I've got those grandbabies. I just was up visiting them, and it was hard to leave them, but I'm going back. So, I've got the twins that are three and a six-year-old, and they already are keeping Grandma busy, so chauffeuring them around all the classes they have. But, thank you all. I've worked with many wonderful people. This was one of the best adventures I have. I want to thank Flonda, and Teresa, and Paul. I'm really going to miss him. He's got a second wife, so... Dr. Gordon has been wonderful. Bee has been wonderful. Amy, I'm just so lucky to have worked, every place I've worked, I've had wonderful people and learned a lot from them. So, I really appreciate that, and thank you all for the wonderful adventure that I had.
Mr. Chairman, I think we'd be better off if we moved the microphone to the back, because when I announce you, this one's for the entire audience.
Well, I was worried. She said that Paul needed to get a second wife, then she said Dr. Gordon.
Uh-oh. Can I ask Kathy Ladewig to come forward, please?
Wow. Woo-hoo. [applause] I didn't have to do anything. I could have put a little alert here.
I know, that's good. Okay. I'll let you do it.
Yeah, you read it.
You do such a good job.
Kathy Ladewig has faithfully served in Human Resources at St. Petersburg College since 1985, starting as a Senior Administrative Secretary and moving through the ranks to become the Director of HR Operations. And whereas Ms. Ladewig has led by example, positively touching every aspect of Human Resources, providing trustworthy guidance to countless employees and earning the respect of colleagues both here and throughout the state of Florida, and whereas Ms. Ladewig has been instrumental in numerous HR initiatives, including but not limited to managing employee benefits, overseeing and improving multiple processes, guiding employees on their retirement options, monitoring compliance activities, and whereas Ms. Ladewig is a person of virtue and kindness who has a sharp memory, a ready wit, and a gracious demeanor, and whereas Ms. Ladewig will be tremendously missed as she enters the next phase of her life, but she goes with our best wishes for a fulfilling and relaxing retirement, now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and to the community by Kathy Ladewig and extend to her our best wishes for employment throughout the, for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 20th day of November 2012. Here, here.
[applause]
You get to say a couple of words?
Okay, a couple of words. First of all, I can't believe it's been more than 27 years. I thought if I made 10, I'd be in the retirement system, I'd be doing good, but nevertheless, I'm not going to say a lot. It's just been a wonderful career. Finished my AA at St. Pete College, and I will miss so many people I've worked with. It's been a true joy, and I hope to always be affiliated with St. Petersburg College in some way. Thank you all.
All right. Mr. Brett?
Move adoption of the retirement resolutions.
It's been properly moved?
Second.
And second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposing, we have accepted the resolutions.
No comments.
No comments?
No comments.
Stefan, that for me, Dr. Law?
Mr. Chairman, late yesterday, we received notes. Could I ask Jeff Kavanaugh to come forward, please, if you'd indulge us just a brief moment? Where'd Jeff go? He was here. Here he comes. Jeff is the Director of our Veteran Services at Collegewide, and Jeff has an announcement.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Dr. Law. Board, my colleagues behind me, and distinguished guests, every two years, the publication of the Military Times, this is the group that publishes the Navy Times, the Army Times, the Air Force Times, the Marine Corps Times, and the Air Force Times, they do a survey of colleges around the country. The survey is approximately 16 pages long and takes several weeks to complete. After it's completed, they call students and shop the schools. This year, 650 schools around the country responded and competed for the title of Most Friendly College in the United States. And this year, I'm pleased to announce that St. Petersburg College was ranked number 15 in the country of most military-friendly schools, and this is a real pleasure for me. Two years ago, when we competed, we were ranked 47th and broke into the top 50, and we've moved all the way to 15. And I would like to tell you that within the next two years, we hope to be in that number-one slot. But I'd like to thank my staff and all of my colleagues in this room that have helped make this happen. It was a distinct pleasure to read. Thank you. And, sir, just in case this hasn't been said by you, you might be wondering what it is I'm holding, and I want you to know that Dr. Law represented the college in the U.S. Marine Corps Marathon that was run in Washington, D.C., and he did so by wearing this little tiny running shirt with the Veterans logo on it. Board? And not only did he compete, he finished and received an award from one of the Marines stationed there, and we want to thank him for his representation. And my student veterans have asked specifically for this shirt, although you did wash it. I noticed. And they have something special for it. We'll let you know what that is when it occurs. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Mr. Chairman, I...
I only have one question, though, Mr. President. Are we number one in Florida? Are we, have everybody else in Florida?
I don't know. Jeff?
Actually, no, sir. The University of South Florida beat us out by eight spots.
Come on.
We can do that. Give away football tickets to the Veds. Mr. Chairman, I told Jeff the shirt is reminiscent of the Craigslist ad where it said, "Wedding dress for sale, worn once by mistake." Happy to represent us, Jeff. Thanks for...
Thank you. Great job. Anything else, Mr. President?
Yes, I do. The hits just keep on happening. Jackie Skritt, would you come forward, please? And again, yesterday, and we ought to meet twice a month, because the good news always piles up the day before the meeting. Jackie, would you just share briefly the grant that we have for the Gateway to College? Okay?
Yes, sir. Gateway to College is a dual enrollment program for at-risk students that are at risk of dropping out of school or already dropped out of school to help them complete their high school education and earn college credit at the same time. And we were fortunate to be awarded yesterday, while we're still under wraps a bit, but $325,000 to help initiate that program at our downtown campus. So, we're very excited. It's a program funded by Gates and Lumina Foundations, as well as Carnegie. So, we're just thrilled. But that announcement was made yesterday afternoon, so we're very excited about that.
Excellent job.
And Catherine Kennedy will be leading that project, so we're excited about that.
Fantastic. Great. And then, lastly, Mr. Chairman, I've talked with all of you, but we are delighted to announce that Governor Rick Scott will be at our Clearwater Campus at 10 o'clock Monday morning. He will make, it will be the first stop in him announcing some very important policy directives in his upcoming budget. You recall, he released his K-12 budget in an overview a couple of weeks ago. He's now embarking on the post-secondary budget, the Florida College System budget, and we were able to get him to hold the announcement there. He will announce at 10 o'clock Monday morning and make a tour of the Collaborative Center, which he was not able to make in August. So, we are delighted to host the governor next Monday for some important, we'll find out what he has in mind for Florida colleges next week. So, I hope everybody can join us and welcome the governor to St. Petersburg College. Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got for today.
I just wanted to thank Jackie for such a good job, and you have to promise on the record that you're not leaving. All right. Good. I heard it. Next, we'll have approval of the minutes from October 16.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposing, we're on to monthly reports. Mr. Lang, good morning.
Good. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Go Gators.
Have no report to make today.
Ms. Gardner?
Good morning. I have no report this morning.
Okay. We're on to Dr. White. Good morning, Dr. White.
Do we need to approve after the meeting, after the minutes, St. Pete Collegiate? Aye.
I didn't see that. It said...
Good morning, everyone.
Hold on one second, Karen. Did the motion include both? Let's just do them separately, then we're done, okay?
You want to do the...
Do the St. Pete High minutes separately, then we'll be sure we're clear.
Okay.
So moved.
It's been probably moved in second, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, and we just approved the St. Pete Collegiate minutes as well. Okay, Dr. White, I'm sorry.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We know that when a student is connected in some way to campus, whether through a club, a mentoring relationship, persistent use of out-of-class support, for example, that their chances of succeeding and finishing what they start are greatly enhanced. We want to talk about our fine arts students at St. Pete Gibbs this morning. They are among the most connected-to-campus students that we have, and they have a way of drawing in other students, for example, with the creation of the first-ever radio station at St. Petersburg College. On October 22nd, we had our grand opening. We launched the radio station at the St. Pete Gibbs campus. The station is housed at the east end of that long hall in the A.D. building, but it can be run remotely as well. Eighteen student engineers created 20 full-length shows to have for that first opening week, and they have new programming every week since then. It's known as Myra, Make Your Radio Active Radio Network. It's Internet-based. The shows cover a wide variety of musical styles, as well as shows and interviews and reports about St. Pete College happenings, including our sporting events. The station was entirely created and is entirely managed by our students. It's done through the Myra Radio Club, and it is led by two student CEOs, Chelsea Smith and Roland Cavill. The 30-plus interns referenced on the slide are MIRA students, the Music Industry Recording Arts Program, and as part of their actual coursework, they spend time working at the Palladium Theater, at the Arts Auditorium at the Clearwater Campus, and most recently, with the Springs Theater. That is the group that the Florida Orchestra contracts with for their recordings. These students work at these venues, and they have hands-on experience in sound design, equipment placement, stage management, acoustic recording, electronic music recording. The St. Pete Gibbs Performing Arts Program includes more than 250 student performers in the fall and spring semesters. They register for 158 different courses at St. Pete Gibbs, and they spend countless hours preparing for these events and their performances. They produce over 25 performances a year, not the least of which I know you already know about in this past year, when the Madrigalians performed at Carnegie Hall. Our classical vocalists are teamed up with the Dolly Museum, and once a month on a Thursday night, we have a student vocalist perform opera at the Dolly. Our music instruction is extensive, and sometimes this feels like one of our best-kept secrets when we are out in the community and talking with others. Not everyone always realizes that we have music instruction in every instrument of the orchestra, including harp, piano, and pipe organ. This is done by credentialed faculty, which includes eight full-time members of the Florida Orchestra, four of whom are principal players, section leaders. And of course, you're always invited as honored guest at any of our performances. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am Martha Campbell, Dean of Communications. And I am Sharon Griggs, Dean of Mathematics. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about St. Petersburg College's efforts toward reducing the time and tuition spent in developmental education. Last year, we shared with the Board our innovative program, My Bridge to Success, funded by the Florida Developmental Initiative Grant. This program features developmental math, reading and writing, and English courses, redesigned to allow students to take selected developmental coursework in an eight-week, two-credit courses, as opposed to the traditional 16-week, four-credit courses. Today, we want to share with you a video presented at the Association of Florida Colleges meeting, where the Chancellor presented SPC's My Bridge to Success Program with the award for Best Practice Academic Affairs.
Developmental math, reading, writing, when do I get to take a course that I actually get credit for? If I keep having to take these remedial courses, I will never finish my degree.
I can't believe it. I'm just one point away in my placement test from ENC 1101.
Improving success rates in developmental courses is a challenge St. Petersburg College has faced over the years. With student success as a top priority and funding from the Florida Department of Education Initiative, St. Petersburg College students have new pathways for completing course requirements. In spring 2011, St. Petersburg College began the My Bridge to Success Program, offering eight-week, two-credit courses to students in the upper levels of developmental reading, writing, and math. The goal: to reduce time and costs of remediation through instruction targeted to students' needs. Since that time, over 500 students have participated in My Bridge Reading, over 500 in My Bridge English, and almost 800 in My Bridge Math. Success rates have risen, most dramatically in My Bridge Reading, and many students have moved into transfer-level courses in the same semester. St. Petersburg College is proud to accept the Chancellor's Best Practice Award on behalf of our talented faculty, working together with students to help them reach their educational dreams.
On October 30th of this year, St. Petersburg College Tarpon Springs Campus hosted the Chancellor's Developmental Education Summit. State policymakers, developmental faculty, college deans and presidents, and other stakeholders met to discuss the current data regarding developmental education in Florida, as well as ways to change the state level, changes at the state level that might address policies related to developmental education. Dr. Scott Park, Vice Chancellor for Research and Analytics, shared this slide with the group. This slide shows the age distribution of developmental education students in Florida over a five-year period. Note that the smallest group is those students between 18 and 20 years old, and that the largest and fastest-growing group of students is over the age of 20. One possible inference is that the state should not only focus on college readiness among high school graduates, but also on continuing to find innovative programs, such as the My Bridge to Success Program, to address students who are returning to school and need targeted instruction to address their deficiencies. Does the Board have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Congratulations, and well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Mr. Chairman. I have a point of personal privilege, if you would. Dr. Griggs has just been phenomenal. She's many things, resolute would be the term I use. She would not let us have a resolution to honor her, but I need to tell you, she is retiring next month. If this isn't the peak of your career, you've had a great career, okay? Seventeen years with St. Petersburg College, joined us in August of '95. She's been a dean since May of '08. She is a member of the Delta Campus Society International since 1980. She has won leadership awards in all of her, throughout her professional career. She is an active member of the Florida Two-Year College Math Association. She has been supportive of our students in the Relay for Life activities, and now we are delighted that she was part of the Chancellor's Best Practice Award. She's been an enormous help to me in trying to initiate the kinds of student success initiatives we've had. We will miss Sharon greatly. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. [applause] I think this beats a retirement resolution. I have had a wonderful end of my career here at the college, and I have met so many people and have so many friends here, I will truly miss it, but I won't miss any more grandchildren's birthdays. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Oh, that's sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We're on to old business, which started being none, on to the new business, student success and achievement information item. Ramona?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ramona Kirsch, the new Director of the Center for International Programs, and it's my pleasure today to come and share with you some of our information about this important program at SPC. The Center for International Programs consists of several components. The first component is international student services. We serve 235 F-1 visa students from 44 different countries. These students not only provide diversity on our campus, but a very positive economic impact, as they all pay non-resident fees. The second element of our program is study abroad academic programs. We administer all programs from SPC. In 2011, 2012, we offered seven programs with 77 students and 11 faculty participants. For the 2012-2013 academic year, we will be offering 10 different programs, three of which are very unique. Just last week, we had a group of education students doing their practicum in Jamaica, the first time we've ever had a fall trip, and the first time we've ever had a practicum abroad, and this is wonderful, they just returned last night. We also have a practicum that will be taking place in Denmark for our Vet Tech students in June, and these are all very exciting. The third element, institutional and organizational partnerships. Currently, SPC Center for International Programs has 14 international and six domestic partnerships. Upon my arrival and examining these, I noticed that many of these have remained dormant, and I've begun to initiate communications with many of them, and I'd like to point out just one that's very significant. In 2010, SPC and USF Tampa signed an international 2-plus-2 agreement, and we have begun meeting with them to activate this very important partnership with USF. The fourth element in international programming, college-wide and community global engagement, is a very important aspect of Center for International Programs. For instance, last week was International Education Week, which is sponsored by the Department of State, Department of Education, and we had over 24 events over a four-day period spread across seven different campuses. And in addition, in the three-and-a-half short months that I've been here, I've been meeting, of course, with committees and groups here on campus, but also in the Tampa Bay area, and representing SPC in the country, at Washington, D.C., at a Fulbright meeting, and presenting a paper in San Juan, Puerto Rico, and meeting one of our partners there. The fifth element of the Center for International Programs is supporting and enhancing the Associate of Arts Degree Three-Credit World Requirement. Currently, all students enrolled in an AA degree are required to have at least three credits of a course with a worldview content. Currently, there are 89 course options within four departments that students can choose from, and we are actively working with faculty to infuse global content into additional courses. Now, with this very brief description, it reveals positive and significant activities. There is much improvement that is needed as we develop broader and more long-term strategic plans for overall development and effectiveness of international programming at SPC. First and foremost, I have found no evidence that there has ever been any qualitative or quantitative tracking of our international... quantitative tracking of our international student body, our study abroad participants, our international agreements, or an assessment of the great faculty that we have and their international expertise. Any short-term efforts or long-term strategic plans must begin with this. Hence, along with immediate measures that I have been taking, I've been working with institutional research, business intelligence, and PeopleSoft to begin to track and glean this information so we can regularly have this at our disposal. Now, having said this, the purposes of this brief presentation, I would like to focus on four improvements that are or will be implemented this semester and next semester. These efforts, while focused upon student success, are tied to long-term strategic plans in international programming. Number one, achieving the dream. Recent research has indicated that there is a very positive link between study abroad and retention graduation rates. There is also literature that indicates that the first study abroad experience of a student promotes actual and substantial intellectual growth. For these reasons and more, we are focusing not only upon developing programs and resources such as scholarships to encourage more study abroad participation for all students, we are actively targeting much of our efforts on getting first-time-in-college students to study abroad. Our goal for this first year is to increase study abroad participation by 75%. Number two, out-of-class support. As we all know, out-of-class support is essential to student success. In addition to the well-known needs of domestic college students, international students have particularly unique out-of-class challenges that come with studying in a foreign country and studying in a foreign language. For this reason, we are immediately developing two programs to mentor our students. The first is a peer-mentor program whereby new international students will be matched with continuing international students over the first weeks of the semester. This will begin immediately in January. The second program is developing an international partners program whereby we match all international students with domestic students, and we hope to get this launched fall of 2013. This not only assists the international students in their acculturation, but also domestic students will have a chance now to integrate and interact with cultures and peoples from all over the world. In addition to the two mentoring programs, the new international student orientation will also be enhanced beginning in January to include elements of the domestic student orientation. This has never been done. Namely, we're going to introduce my learning plan and follow up the tracking of these students in the first semester. The goal for this year is to have 100% of our new international students beginning in January participate in these things. Number three, faculty and staff development. I believe we all know that engaged faculty and well-informed staff enhance student success. For this reason, international programming will focus this year on developing opportunities for faculty and staff training. As such, in collaboration with the Center of Excellence for Teaching and Learning, otherwise known as CDL, we are developing a three-part Go Global Faculty Training Series to begin in spring 2013. In collaboration with Staff and Professional Development, they've asked me to create a spring training offering for staff, which we are calling Know Your World. Our goal for this current year is to increase by 50% the number of faculty participating in study abroad programming and to have at least 100 staff throughout the college participate in our Know Your World spring training. And finally, number five, job development and careers. Student success not only means academic progress and graduation, but also being well-prepared to enter a global marketplace. Recent research of the American Association of Colleges and Universities found that over 67% of employers say colleges and universities should place more emphasis on helping students understand the global context of situations and decisions. For this reason, we are working with department deans and academic chairs to develop international opportunities for practicum experiences and internships, such as in Jamaica and in Costa Rica and Canada. In addition, knowing that not all students are able to travel abroad for their practicum experience or their study abroad experience, international programs is assisting many departments on campus to gather information about international organizations and businesses that our students may either internship in, have practical experiences, or get a global infusion. Our goal is already in the process. We are working with Tech Data to develop two international internships, one in Canada, one in Costa Rica with the College of Business, and that's a wonderful thing that we will be doing, and we're also working very, very much with Tampa Bay organizations as well. Now, these four goals are designed to establish a good foundation upon which international programs can begin to build a sustainable and relevant platform for our students not only to succeed, but to launch themselves into the global marketplace. Thank you very much, and I will be happy to entertain questions.
Mr. Brett?
First of all, very, very impressive. Very nice to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
The seven study abroad programs, could you just touch on a few of those?
I would.
And give me a couple of examples of what those are?
Yes, I would love to. Jamaica is our first one. That is, again, is the week-long that they just spent in a literacy project, and it's a wonderful thing, a group of education students going into Jamaica and literally working in schools with children on literacy. This spring break is a unique program we have in Scotland and England, and the classes, there's two classes attached it. They're both semester-long in the spring. Before the spring break, they're going to Scotland and England to study humanities, world religions, and culture there. We have a London theater program. This is the first time that the theater department has kind of stepped into the study abroad arena, which is wonderful, and it's a great program where not only theater students, but anyone interested in theater can go and learn about the rich culture of London and the theater history there. Ireland is one of our long-term programs. It's been happening for several years, and it's also with one of our partners. We have, again, many partners, and the college that we utilize in Northern Ireland is one that we've had a relationship, and that is a wonderful psychology program. Spain is also another long-term program, and this is a Spanish-language immersion where the students are actually living with host families and getting really integrated into the city of Salamanca, and that is our longest trip right now. It's three weeks. Italy, we have two trips to Italy. Italy Humanities is now going to be in its third year this coming summer, and it's a wonderful, rich program that occurs in Rome and in Florence. And then we have an Italy High School program that has gone on since 2009, and that's a wonderful program with the local high school, the Catholic High School, and our collegiate high school, and faculty from both of those institutions lead this high school group, and we're hoping to open that up to many more opportunities for high school students in the area. Finally, Costa Rica is a wonderful business program that has been run for several years, and it's a very active, and we have a relationship actually with Tech Data in Costa Rica through that study abroad program.
So Jamaica is a week, Ireland is three weeks, and Ireland would be the longest?
No, the longest is Spain. The longest is Spain. Ireland is May 3rd to 18th, so about two weeks.
So, and how long is Spain?
Spain is June 23rd to July 15th.
And you touched on community partners. You mentioned, of course, Tech Data.
Yes.
Who are some of the other community partners?
Yes, the community institute, I'll go with institutional partnerships, the international partnerships, or the community partners, or both?
I'm more interested in local partners.
The local partners. USF is our largest local partner right now in terms of an actual formal agreement. We also are a part of the Florida Association of International Educators, and actually will be hosting that group here next year. I was just at a conference in Valencia College, and that's a wonderful organization made up of counterpart, my counterparts around the state, where we actively share best practices and new innovative ideas together. I've also just, the other, it's a local partner, but it's statewide. There's a new organization called Study Florida, and I've just been appointed as a member of, the at-large member of a Board of Directors, and this organization is specifically designed to not only lift schools up to the global marketplace and have a presence in the world, but also to actively seek out excellent international students to come and get degrees here at SPC. Other than that, the organizations of the International Business Council, the Tampa Bay International Business Council, I've begun to start making contact with them in terms of opportunities, and the Lippa Ratner Museum, while it's part of our SPC, I've also been talking with the curator and some of the members of the Board there in terms of what we can do, in terms of local and global engagement.
Are there any businesses other than Tech Data? Sounds like most of the other partners are all agencies or councils and...
The internship program, I've been working with Amy in the internship program, and she has a complete list of all of the businesses that are local that she has been actively working with, so that is not, I will refer to her and I could find those out. And she's actively, we've begun to work together in terms of what can we do to integrate international programming along with her internship programs.
I'd be curious.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind at some point, get those items to me.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Those are great programs, eight phenomenal programs. Mr. F.
One question.
Sure.
You said 235 students from 44 different countries. Is there a particular country that, I mean, which country is providing the most students?
Right. I have the handout we did for the Fall Welcome. Saudi Arabia currently is our highest population, and primarily that's because the government of Saudi Arabia is supporting them in a really wonderful way, and they were going through ESL classes, ILI and EAP. The second-most populous country is Vietnam, followed by Thailand, Brazil, Venezuela, Canada, India, Morocco, Taiwan, and Syria. Those are our top 10.
Great. You spoke about probably, I think, eight different programs. What's the participation from our college? How many students are involved in the program and going abroad?
That's great, yes. I can give you the gauge of what we did last year in 2012. There were 77 total. In Belize, we had 14. Costa Rica, we had 11. Ireland, we had 14. The Italy High School had 14. Italy Humanities had nine. Jamaica had eight this year, this fall, and Spain had 15. So the highest population is Spain, and followed by Belize, and then Italy. And this follows the national trend. European countries are still very much on the top end of study abroad. Italy and Spain consistently top the list.
Any more questions?
No.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good report, very nice.
Dr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Williams is going to make a, I reviewed the presentation, and it's quite well-done. Our highest priority this year, as you recall, was the student success, the college experience, and it had five component parts, so we created the 5x180 focus for this semester. I've asked Tanja to give us a report this month so that we can get this to you as background as we head into the workshop next month. Rather than take time next month to drop information on you, I thought we would give you, we're starting to see the framework of how well things have worked, where we need to improve, but I think you'll be impressed about the execution of the program. So I'd like to just make sure you know that it's still a work in progress, a little bit earlier report than we anticipated, but I think it will be to all of our benefit and give us a more robust discussion next month. So Tanja, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Tanja's done with the provost. I think I'm fun to work with, but I'm not always fun to work with, and I have been on these guys every day, and they have answered the call, so have at them, okay? They can take a punch, okay? So go for it.
Thank you, Dr. Law. Appreciate that.
Do they know how to duck?
They haven't learned to duck yet.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Trustees, Dr. Law, our esteemed colleagues in the room. Very, very happy to stand before you this morning and share with you where we are with the college experience in the 5x180. Dr. Law has given you a very good introduction, so I'm going to skip my introduction. You have seen this chart before. Last year, we met with you in the Collaborative Lab, and you gave us the charge to go back and make improvements in our student experiences to make sure that students are brought in the college correctly, have a great experience to get registered, and do well in school. So we're working on three things. We're working on introducing them to the college better, we're working on getting them into the seat prepared with all that they need, and we're working on providing them with the resources they need to succeed and helping them graduate in a timely manner. This chart shows you those five initiatives. The college experience is a living and breathing value at St. Pete College. It's not a project. It is actually who we are and what we believe in as we work with our students. As you can tell, we actually put our budget where our values are. So last year, you gave us permission to use funding to help get started to serve our students. So the five initiatives are listed there: New Student Orientation, The Learning Plan, An Early Alert System, Developmental Advising and Career Services, and Enhancing Our Learning Support. So today, I'm going to take you through those five initiatives very briefly and share with you where we are in the project. New Student Orientation. We started this over a year ago with a few students as a pilot, and today, we have served 3,040 first-time-in-college students to come through a face-to-face orientation to learn about the college and where we're standing. In front of you, you have some data on what else we've done. We've reached out to students, something we had not done before, 4,267 advising contacts. They were called, they were emailed, some folks went even to the students' classroom to reach them to find out, how's it going, what's happening for you in school? We had not done that in the past. You have in front of you what's called lead measures, and weekly, the provost, Joe Leopold and others are on the phone to talk about what are some of the things that will help us reach our ultimate goal, and how are we doing? Those lead measures are actually predictive, and they're things that we can use to help move the needle along. We're not going to wait till the end result where we get the lagging measures. Those are things that happen after the fact and say, oh, we should have done this, or we should have done that. So weekly, we're working on those lead measures, so you have them in front of you. For the college experience, as you can see, with the New Student Orientation, we are looking for how many students are actually attending the orientations, how effective are the orientations, how many students are being reached during the first three or four weeks of class, and how do students feel about the orientation and how did it work for them? So where do we think we are in this initiative? We think we're doing okay. There's still some work to be done. The orientation setup is great, the way that we offer it is great, but the way we collect data is an area where we need more work on. We need to improve our tracking of students and the outreach that our advisors do as they communicate with students. So we have some work to do in this area. Our next steps, we're going to survey our students early. We're going to find out, is this really working for you? Was the information you received in New Student Orientation helpful, or did you find it a waste of time? We believe they're going to say helpful, so we need to do that. We also need to create a database to help us track the communications with the students. We're finding that different campuses are moving along in different ways in tracking, and we need to come together and find a way to track as a team and close the loop. Individualized learning plans. We know that if a student does not know where they're going, if they don't know, where am I headed? How many courses do I need to take? What courses do I need to take? They'll never finish what they start. So we started our individualized learning plans this fall, and as you can see, 904 students of 1,419 students enrolled in SLS classes have initiated their plans. They've started their plans, 61%, 18.2 completed them. And for the college body, this is a group that we haven't really advertised a lot to that we're working on, 6,911 students have started their learning plans, and I think that is just tremendous work there. So what are the lead measures that will help us move along to get 100% of our students to complete the learning plan? We're going to have to look at how many students are actually entering one or more courses in their learning plan, how many students are actually completing the plan, and how many students are entering one or more terms at a time. That is something that we're looking at every single week, how many students are doing these things. Where are we? With the learning plans, we've done a great job. We feel like we're moving and we're right on target. As you can see, we're on schedule, even with our student body. We only wanted to try to work with about 2,000 or 3,000 students this year, and we've already exceeded that number. So if we can get our students in our SLS classes moving, we'll be moving right along. So we feel pretty good about that. What do we need to do going forward? We need to expand the use of the learning plan. We need to codify, I think, the percentages that are given to students in the SLS classes to encourage them to complete the learning plan earlier than later in the term, and we need to expand to other groups and emphasize to our instructors the importance of using the learning plan. Integrated Developmental Advising and Career Services. Integrated Developmental Advising and Career Services. Basically, the integrated developmental advising requires advisors to do more than the egg timer advising where it's next, click next. It's actually working with them and saying, why are you at SPC? What goals do you hope to accomplish? Do you know your career choices that you want? How many hours are you working? Do you have responsibilities? So it takes a lot more effort to do the developmental advising than it does the way we used to do it in the past. So if you look now, you'll see that by combining developmental advising and academic advising, we're having more students utilize the tools that we have purchased to help them choose career choices and make job and work choices better. So 3,334 students completed the Focus Two Inventory, which is an inventory to help students figure out, what's my personality? What are my interests? What kind of job best suits me going forward? To help them select a program code and what plan they want to be on. Without this, we have students who are just taking classes and don't know where they want to go. In this plan, students will be tagged according to their results, green, yellow, or red. And the yellow and red students, those are the ones we're going after to help them actually figure out why you're here, what you want to do. The green lighters can keep going through. 506 students have completed that session. And 513 have completed Optimal Resume to help. Require our advisors to ask seven questions when students come through the door now. And those questions will help us figure out where they are in this initiative. So as you can see, that is one of the leading measures, thank you, for students in this Another leading measure is trying to make sure students know what their career service needs are. Do you need help with assessment? Do you need help in choosing what kind of job? Do you need a shadowing opportunity? I think if you recall, when we had our session last December, we shared with you information where our students didn't know where they wanted to go. They didn't know what plan to choose and what to do. This is why this is a leading measure for us. So where are we with the integrated developmental advising? With Focus Two and the use of Optimal Resume, we feel we're doing very well. But there's a lot more work to be done in developmental advising. Going forward, we're going to have to really improve our training for staff to make sure that the advisors are comfortable and understand how to provide good developmental advising. We need to find a way to integrate metrics that we're using. Our data is kind of all over the place, so we need to pull that together. And we also need to review our policy on advising. I believe we do have a policy that advising is required. We now have to implement that to make students do that going forward. Early Alert. Many of you were very excited about Early Alert because it's a plan that allows us to find out early on how a student is doing and if a student is at risk for failing early on. We took this challenge on working with the developmental courses for this term. So as you can see, we've had 558 alerts that have been submitted to our advisors in the first 12 weeks. And those advisors have reached out to those students to find out what's going on, what can we do differently, and refer them to the right support services for them to succeed. 86 sections of 188, which is 54%, of the classes have submitted an early alert. And the support coaches right now have an average of 10 students that they're case-managing. And this is huge. This is different than what we've done in the past. So they're reaching out to those students early on and not waiting until it's too late to rectify whatever the issues are. And the faculty are moving forward on pushing those through. So how are we doing? We feel this is still a work in progress. We're only doing the developmental students right now. Faculty are moving forward. Staff are working hard. But capturing the data has been a challenge. The system that we purchased has not been developed for us to actually capture all the data on who spoke to whom, how did it go, what did the students say, what did the faculty say? And so we're going back and we're going to expand the system to be able to capture that data so we'll know what's going on and how effective that contact was. So that's the first thing we need to do and we need to develop more training for staff. I think that this is a little different for them because when a student calls in, they'll, when we call a student, they'll say, I didn't go to class. And we find out that they have no childcare or other issues. They're much larger than what we're used to. Out-of-classroom support. Under the leadership of Joe Leopold, our students are receiving an enhanced opportunity for support services out of class. These services are free to students. They will come to writing labs, tutorial labs, supplemental instruction. The staff goes into the classroom and faculty bring students into the library for support. As you can see, we have a 76% increase in the use of our learning support opportunities. That is huge. Our faculty have been very supportive in bringing students to the lab and helping students understand that going to the learning support center is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. You're going early before you fail. We've had 7,009 students who received library instructions, which is huge. They're coming in to learn how to use the online tools as well as the face-to-face tools. And 105 full-time faculty have donated their time in the library. I think that is just amazing. So we're real pleased with that. So our lead measures, number of students who are using the learning support centers, how many are coming through, how many are using the services, how many are coming for class visits, how many are coming to the tutoring labs, and also how many workshops we provide. We believe that these leading measures will help us in the lagging measures and finding out that the end result will show that more students are successful in the courses for which they've received tutoring in. So where are we? Still a work in progress. We've got a long way to go in this area. We've made a lot of strides here, but we still need to improve the staff and being actively engaged with students and going forward. So what do we want to do? First, remove the stigma that going to the tutoring lab is bad. Because it's not bad, it's good. So we're working on strategies to make our tutoring centers the hub of the campus so that that's where students hang out. It's a good place to be. It feels great. The services are great and they're really being helped. And we also need to design a process to capture data. And we're doing a great job there, but there's more work that can be done. So what have we learned? First of all, helping students succeed is everybody's job. And that there are some things you just have to make mandatory. They must be required for students to do them. They're not going to come on their own. We also know that we've just got to train staff better. This is new to them and we're trying to help change the culture. And I think, Dr. Law, it was Kay McClenni who said that culture will eat strategy's lunch every day. You can put a lot of strategies in place, but if you don't change the culture and the people doing the work, they're not going to stick. Well, the college experience is definitely a part of our culture. It is not just a strategy. The other thing that we've learned with the leading measures is you've got to go at this every day. You've got to hit this every week. And so I want to show you in our SharePoint site how we meet every single week about these five initiatives. Some of us are on the phone and some of us are around the table. And every week, each lead of these five initiatives report. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to choose the learning plan.
Oh, good. That's a good one.
And I'm going to show you what Dr. Carney shared with us last week. This shows you the number of students who actually utilized the learning plan and completed it. And you can see the numbers going forward. This will actually allow you to show if we only want Clearwater Campus. Let's see if I can.
Those are the number of terms that a student has planned within their plan.
So at Clearwater Campus, you'll see 57 of those SLS students have not planned one term. Eight have planned one, nine have planned two, two have planned three. So what do we do with this data? We go back and we get with our colleagues and we partner with Dr. Smiley, we partner with Dr. Cooper. We look at what can we do different to get more students to complete their plan and to do all their semesters. So you see at the end for the Clearwater Campus, 141 students completed seven or more terms. So they have their courses lined up all the way out to seven terms. So when it's time to register, they're not trying to figure out, what am I taking? How it's been planned? I'll also go back and show you, let's see, who else can we show?
Did the out-of-class support? Joe's got a lot of data there.
Yes, he does.
And it comes in different forms. We've got a lot of data. It's a little untidy at times, but Joe's done a good job.
Okay, his is an Excel spreadsheet, which is just great. This one shows how many full-time faculty give their time weekly in the tutoring lab. If I go to this link, it shows the number of services that students are receiving and the days that they're receiving it. And it even shows the subject areas. Those are the popular areas and how many students are coming weekly. This tab shows the visits by hour, what are the popular times that students come to the lab. And as you can see, it looks like we start off kind of around nine o'clock-ish and it's busy until about one. And then we have a little peak at downtown at six o'clock. So a lot of students come in at six at downtown. So it helps the team make sure that they have the staffing there to serve the students when they come. So each initiative has, we have buckets for each one. They have their own files and they just tee it up when it's time and share with us where we are with that initiative. This keeps it alive and keeps it moving and it keeps everybody on their toes going forward. Questions?
Mr. Brett? Very impressive. Thank you. It's fun to watch, fun to watch the progress, you know, and a lot of excitement when this thing was rolled out. Said this many, many times, I've, as a parent, I appreciate a lot of this. Question. Back to the first, the first graphic, 3,040 participants since fall 2011 pilot. And first-time-in-college students who tested into two or more developmental courses are required to go to the orientation.
Right.
So, do you know of that 3,040 roughly, how many are required to be there?
All of those students were the required students.
Okay. So no students are going to the orientation unless they're required to be there?
Well, actually, we do have students who bogart their way in because their friends are in orientation and they don't want to miss an opportunity. So we do have students who are not required who will come.
Those students can still use the online piece. And they can, they can get into a face-to-face orientation if they express an interest to do that. We want to be sure though, those who we think absolutely need it, get to that orientation.
So everybody that's there is required to be there?
That would be your.
And our ultimate goal is that all first-time-in-college students will have to go through the face-to-face orientation.
Well, that was my next question.
That's the ultimate goal. We're scaling it out.
And that's got to happen over time, obviously.
Yes. Well, we've been talking about next fall, that it will be everybody.
Don't we change in January?
In January, we changed to students who test into one or more.
Yeah, I saw that.
And then in the fall, it will be everyone who are first-time-in-college students.
Okay. And so, how many first-time-in-college students are there?
I knew you were going to ask that.
Like, 3,000 fit into this category where they have to be there?
It's 3,500 first-time-in-college students. You're looking at two years' worth of orientation. For this year, for the fall, I believe we had about 1,500 students go through orientation that were required.
And when you say face-to-face, what does that mean?
They come into a lab where computers are. The instructors are there. Students who are helping in the room are there and they actually have a face-to-face orientation.
How many in a group?
Usually, it's about 12 to 15, depending on the campus and the capacity of the rooms that they have. They get a lot of individual attention. And there, when they walk out, they're registered.
How long does that session usually last?
It's about two hours. Some take longer depending on questions, issues.
And I have a question about the early alert system. You talk about 558 alerts have been generated in a 12-week period. Could you just briefly tell me the protocol of how does an alert get generated?
Yes.
And how's it, how is it handled?
Okay.
And I know there's probably a lot of different ways that it's handled, but generally?
If a student is struggling in class, whether they are failing a test or they don't show up or they're coming unprepared, the faculty member will try to reach out to that student on the first attempt. They'll try to reach out to them and say, hey, Tanja, you're not coming to class, you're going to fail, what's going on, et cetera. If I do it again, then they're going to use the student coaching system and they're going to push the button on me and that comes to an advisor. And that advisor reaches out to that student and say, hey, Tanja, I received an early alert on you. You've missed two classes. You can only miss three and this is week three. You know, you can only miss three for the whole term and you've already missed two and this is week three. Can you come in and let's talk about what are some of the issues that you're struggling with in reference to why you're missing? And then I will come in. Sometimes they don't. So sometimes we have to go out and get them. But they will communicate with them and say, here's what you need to do. Let's look at what's going on in your life. Sometimes we refer them to out of, out of the college support services if they're having children issues or housing issue. It depends on what the issue is. Then the coach puts back in the system, contacted Tanja, here's what's going on, here's where we are with the situation. We're having a little glitch in the faculty getting that response back to know what is going on. And then I monitor that student throughout that term.
When you say there's a little bit of a glitch?
Mm-hmm.
The instructors not up to speed on the specifics of each challenge?
Yeah, we're working on that.
That's why it's a pilot project, you know? That's exactly the kind of thing you want to learn in a pilot project with 1,800 students. I will tell you that the numbers, where we have seen it, it's been helpful and it's working through the thing. I'm a little concerned that it's uneven. 54%. The other 46%, the students are randomly distributed. They should be having alerts in their class too. But now we know who they are. We can go follow up those instructors, find out why they didn't use the system, what happened. This is very helpful. And again, we go out on Wednesday mornings, we know exactly how many courses have had zero alerts. And we can say, let's get in touch with those folks and find out what's going on there. Someone's not with the program. So we're doing a pretty good job on the execution. I wish the numbers were better in every case, but that's not the issue. Getting a system that works is the most important thing.
So all first-time-in-college students will be required to attend the New Student Orientation starting when?
August.
August.
2013.
I want to be careful because I want, that's our plan and I hope that's it. At the end of this semester, though, I want to see that the orientation made a difference. That is, we took the ones who we required to come and we had a whole bunch who weren't required to come. How do the two groups look? And we have to keep refining the requirement piece if we think that's important before we expand it to everyone, Mr. Brett. So we'll share that information with you. But that's the key variable is student success, not, not how many alerts we did or how many follow-up calls. We've got to keep the students in class to success. So we're working on that.
Exactly.
We had a good discussion last week about how to gather that data.
What do you attribute, Dr. Williams, the, this great, this 76% increase in the out-of-class How did that come about?
I would say first, the faculty. They're encouraging students to go. Some faculty are taking their classes to the learning centers to try to get students involved. We have other initiatives and programs that are taking their students there. And Joe's done a great job in changing the look and feel and the services of the learning centers to be more student-friendly. We've improved the number of tutors we have. You know, you get the students to come, you need to have more tutors there. I think we've done a lot of that. But the faculty have played a key role in encouraging students to come to the center.
Mr. Brett, 105 of the faculty members are holding some of their office hours in the centers.
In the tutoring center.
It's wonderful. I mean, it's perfect.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Dr. Williams, great job. I have a couple of questions, but Mr. Brett stole a lot of them, so. It sounds like the data system is, how much is that going to cost? How do we fix that, Dr. Law, in terms of collecting data, having a receptacle? It looks like you have a lot of it in place, but in terms of what Dr. Williams is talking about, how do we get the staff back with proper information?
We have a long talk about, we, we've, we've got three or four things that capture data, but then they don't talk to each other, right? Who's next, knows, Bill showed up at the learning center on this day at this time, he logged in and everything else. We don't know what course they used and that sort of stuff. We had a big discussion last week about how to put these together. And I'm pretty optimistic we can do it at a pretty low cost. The SharePoint piece is going to give us a great deal of help. We're starting to learn how to pull key data where we can match it together. It's all new, we, we had to develop every one of these metrics since, since August. I mean, the first phone call on a Wednesday morning, everybody's talking about how good they feel. And everybody talking about data, okay? And now you see, we have, every week, we have reports that they have developed that give us some quantitative measure of activity that we think. Here, here's the notion we're working on, lead indicators, lag indicators. If, if I tell you that I'm going to lose 30 pounds, the only thing I can do is weigh myself at the end of the time and do it. If I say I'm going to lose 30 pounds by going to the gym three times a week, I can measure whether I've gone to the gym three times a week. And what we're trying to do is capture those kinds of activities, lead indicators that we think predict ultimate beneficial impact. And then say, "We can change the lead indicators, let's make calls, let's get more calls going, let's follow up the faculty who didn't do anything, let's do that." So that the summative indicator, we think will be better. That's been the fun.
The reason I asked that question is this just seems like this is going, this has, this is our culture now and we have to fund it. And we need to make sure that we fund it properly. So that's why I was asking that question to make sure going forward as a board, we really know what we're getting ourselves into. Not from the standpoint of being bad, but from the standpoint of making sure that we actually touch the individual. How many times we touched them, has it been effective? The same thing you're saying, but if their communication, it sounds like you're collecting data, but if there's a communication problem, we definitely don't need that, we need to make sure that the data, and we have to be careful, I guess, with how much information you give to any individual because you can only know so much about each student, why they're struggling so much. But if the instructor doesn't know, we, you know, they can't help. So that's why I'm asking, that's a critical piece. Because when that person, whoever that is, young, old, middle, middle-of-the-road person comes into the classroom, they got, they have to know how they can help them if there's something that they need to be doing in the classroom, that's why I ask that.
And, and the big support that you gave us last year is proving to be adequate, more than adequate. If we need additional resources in some targeted areas, those would be high on the budget priorities. I don't know that answer yet, we're, we're still assessing. You know, Joe Leopold did a great job, we put a lot of money into additional support in the centers. Now we're trying to figure out, did we get it just right? Did we have it in the right place, did we have it in the right measures, did we have all of that? And by February, we'll, we'll have it together.
I'm glad that, that the early alert is working because I was the early alert in the grocery store and I kept to call Joe and then we go from there. But I'm glad to see that works and that still happens sometimes from time to time, but it works.
The 500 alerts do not include the 250 that you get every semester.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it. And Dr. Williams, I think you're right about the, the hub of the campus being the Learning Commons. And, you know, I found that when you say tutoring, especially to middle-aged students, they get very nervous. It, it makes them feel like you're saying dumb. And I hate to say it that way, but I have, and Joe can tell you to some extent, when I get calls and you, well, you know this as well, you have to calm them down and say tutoring is not a bad thing, it's only to help you be successful. So we have to make tutoring or Learning Commons, whatever, cool. I know they did it in Tallahassee, I don't know if it's because they named it Dr. Law Learning Commons or whatever. If that helps, let's do it. If you have to name it after whoever, let's just make it a cool place to go because that's true. I think that's the one impediment that I see for a lot of students who come back to college when you say tutoring. They're almost like, "Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute." And, and it requires time. And so a lot of them don't have that time as well, so it, it becomes difficult. And then on staffing, if you need help with staffing, listen, I think you should talk to, I saw your chart about staffing, how to staff. Just talk to Mr. Brett, I've never seen him never fully staffed. I don't know how he does it at his place, but he's always staffed when people die, so maybe you can talk to him about it.
You don't want to talk to me.
No, but great job, thank you so much. Any more questions?
Well, great job.
Cat and Fox, great job, thank you.
Thank you, Tanja, really nicely done.
Okay, do we want to take a, I mean, a vote or get a motion on A, B, C, D, or all of these and then come back and discuss them? Or do you just want to, it doesn't matter to me. We have the lease agreement coming up, which is an action item. But if we take them up, then we can just discuss them and then take a motion and then we can discuss them and then count them through after that, all the way through.
How far do you want to go?
Maybe we go down to D.
Does that make a motion to accept? B, C, D?
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Then let's just, you want to go ahead and vote them through?
No, no, this is good.
All right.
No, that's all.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposing, we're, we can do the, the lease for the dental hygiene school if there's anything, you have any, you want to talk about it, Dr. Law?
No, I think that was a good plan. You know, to, it's so disruptive to make those changes that doing it all at once really made sense to us. And I think the fact that, that we, we own them at the end for a marginal dollar got us where we needed to be.
Do any board members have any questions on B, C, or D, on any of these items?
No.
No.
Okay. If none, if we don't have any questions, Dr. Law, can we move on down to item E, which is our capital L?
Move approval of E1.
Second.
Moving second, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, we're down to E2.
Mr. Chairman, E2 is a ministerial item, we have to request a site survey. So that one is, I don't think that one requires discussion, that's just a form that.
E2A?
E2A.
Okay.
Yeah, it's E2A, okay. E2B is, is, is the subject, the centerpiece of today's board meeting, so let's take time on that.
All right.
We are, in, in this item, we are now moving forward with the request for qualifications for construction management services.
It means you're getting a building whether you want it or not, Dr. Law.
We're going to get some help to do this. Now, here, there's, there's several pieces and I'm, I think we have kept faith with the board. I feel really good about this project. It had not been easy and, and, you know, we've zigs and dags a little bit, but we are now charging forward. But here's, here's what I would like to do. We've done two things with this change in the request for qualifications. We're trying to expand the, we, we want to be sure everybody who has an interest has a, a more, I want to be careful, I don't want to judge people. Want to make sure that we're as open as can be for as many general contractors as want to bid on this project. So we've, we've changed some of the way we do this and we've done two things. One is, we're going to ask members of the board to nominate somebody to serve with us in the, the screening process so that the college can address a perception, real or not real, that the, the field had gotten too narrow of people doing work for the college. We don't have to judge whether that, I, we got it because some people think it's that way. My goal is simply to make sure when we have a project that everybody who has an interest feels like they have had a, the fullest, fairest hearing. The way to do that is to expand the funnel. If we get some community leaders, I think it will help us avoid any criticism as to how we reach that, that decision. So if you, if you will do that. I think in this project, it's particularly important because there's such high ownership in the midtown and the, the South Main Pete area that expanding that to include some community people in the, the analysis, I, I think that's a good idea. And I want to compliment the chairman for his, his encouraging me to do that and I'm happy to present that. The second is, we've changed the, some of the criteria that we use. We have added a factor in the weighting that we call beneficial community impact. And we think it's a way for, for good contractors to talk about how the community can benefit in the, in the, in the construction of major projects in our community. And that would be where they make a very strong commitment to, to the small business frameworks that we already have in state law and board. And to make a particular commitment in the identification of minority subcontractors as part of the project overview. So giving that additional weight, I think puts a great deal of, we put our, our money where our values are. And if that's one of the values, we can do that. Mr. Brett, I think you asked last month if we would take that under consideration and we've done that. And then I think it does another thing. I think, quite frankly, I, I think that is the appropriate legal way for local general contractors to feel that they have a strong chance to get the project. They should have the best relationship with subcontractors. And if they don't, shame on them, then they really, that's, that's their business problem, that's not our problem. So, so those two major shifts, I think, allow us to say, we've reached out to make sure that the corporations feel like they have a full, fair, enthusiastic shot. And then the people who will be impacted after we've spent 15 or 18 million bucks, they have been put to work in the, the building and the construction of a, a major facility in their community. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that is the proposal I have for you in the change of these two things. I hope it meets the needs in the discussions we've had.
Mr. Brett, do you have any?
I just have a question on the RFQ relating to the items you were just talking about, Dr. Law. Under item 3F, when it talks about beneficial community impact. My comments at our last meeting was to try to establish a goal of 30% minority subcontractors. And I guess my question maybe is more for legal. It looks as if what we've ended up with here is trying to achieve the goal of 30% subcontractors from the local area. And then in the second paragraph, it goes into more detail about having the, the contractor use their very best effort, or good faith efforts as it, as it says here, to, to obtain minority business enterprise participation. And so, I guess my question is, we cannot require a certain percentage of minority subcontractors? Is that, is that accurate?
That would be my understanding and I do not think to have a, an absolute requirement would be in our best interest, okay?
And I, and I appreciate that and I think the way this has, the way this is worded and the way it's flowed, I, I'm very comfortable with it and I just wanted to clarify that.
Dr. Law, can I help? Uh, Mr. Brett, also Louis Moore sat with Dr. Law and went through, who is the purchasing director for the city and was a part of the Sweet Bay and the other projects that happened in Midtown. Louis felt, if I'm wrong, Dr. Law correctly, felt like that there, you could very easily get to 30% minority participation. And some folks would probably go beyond that, but this should be the threshold. And so as reviewers in the committee, they should be looking to see if they meet that 30% or not. And so, so that they could get the maximum amount of points, am I right?
Yeah, it's exactly right. I think that, I think that becomes a threshold. I think good contractor, it, it's, it's pretty easy to see, we put the highest weighting in that category.
Yes.
So it's hard to miss that that's a high priority for us. And I would suspect they're going to come in and tell us how they can do better than that. But we have that dialogue before we make the choice. And not after the fact, chase it around and say, "Well, how did we measure it?" and that kind of stuff, so.
I, I think that'll work.
Mr. Brett, any more questions?
No, thank you, I think this, I think it's well done.
I just want to ask, how many people on this selection committee besides the three that we?
I, I originally had, had said this might run as high as 10 or 12. I, I think we can narrow this down to seven or eight if you would like. You're going to provide three, we've got to have some staff people on, I mean, Dr. Gordon needs to be on there. We need to have some people from facilities and that sort of thing. We don't want to overrun it, we want to play it fair, but we've got to staff the committee too, by the way. So if, if you're comfortable, we could make that six to eight people rather than 10, is that a better way to go?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I just didn't want to get too big.
Oh, no, no, I get it. I have a few things, let me, let me start out by saying this, gentlemen. I don't know what other presidents are doing at other colleges and staff, and staff and faculty and everybody. I, I want to say this very publicly, I don't know what the other presidents are doing. But in this process, you all are to be commended, but also our president. We have, this has been nothing short of a negotiation back and forth. But I think, and I, and I say that in jest, but I really mean, we have gone back and forth figuring out what's the best way to serve the community, the greater community and make sure we have an impact in the greater community. But also that we have the best process going forward. So much so, Dr. Law has already said, you know, this is going to be kind of his template going forward. But it has been a very good exchange back and forth. He has been more than accepting of any changes I may, I wanted to make. And if we couldn't make them, he said, "Hey, this is why we can't do that." And you should be commended on that, you and your staff, Dr. Law. There's some, some, the things he talked about are exactly right. I would like to see us as a board cap this at seven on the committee, just so we don't run into a four-to-four vote. And he has to staff it. The other thing is that one of the three people that we, we choose should, should have to be chair because they're taking their time from the community. And so I would like to make sure that that, that happens, that the, the outside people are the only folks that could be elected as chair. And not to influence the process, but we have to remember they're taking a lot of their personal time to do this. So we want to make sure that we make it a, an experience in which they feel useful. Also, we talked about, oh, Dr. Law, we talked about on the, right, right in line with what Mr. Brett discussed, the beneficial community impact and making that 30 points and going down on D, which is scheduling and cost control, to 20. So that the major piece of this goes right back to what you discussed, being a local, looking for local folks that are focused on benefiting our local community more than anything else. And then, Dr. Law explained to me about item B, which is the ability to, ability and financial capability. And in the second line there, well, basically underneath this is here's this, here the selection committee will consider the financial condition and past experience of the firm. And that the, of the proposed staff to, to assign rating, the firm's ability to perform within the proposed project schedule listed below. This is not, I mean, I want to be clear because this is not to influence one way or another. And maybe one thing we do, Mr. President, is allow the chair to sit in on that particular piece and that's it. And that's the only person, whoever they select as chair, allow them to sit in on that piece. And so those would be the only changes that, that I would see going forward. And Dr. Law is right, I think this is, listen guys, we are down the road on this. We are finally about to build this building, this has been a great process, it's been a learning process, one that I would not take back. I think it's been very good for all of us and it's, it's a lot of vested interest in this community. A lot of people are looking forward to this facility being built. So those are the only things that I would add to this. If there's any more comments from the board, I'll take them.
Mr. Chairman, let me be sure I sum up just two critical points, okay? The final recommendation is from me to you, okay? And, and the work of this committee advises me and it, it doesn't tie my hands and I'm happy to have the help. Secondly, it comes to you. And after I've done my best work, you're the board, you, you retain the final authority. But because you have had this kind of ownership along the way, I, you know, I think we can be pretty clear that we can avoid difficult situations down the road. So I'm, I'm increasingly comfortable and then I'm going to make one more point. We're going to have to do almost the same thing in Clearwater. I mean, if they're going to be a, an, an interested partner, we're going to have to include them in the process as well so that they have some skin in the game as we move forward with this. So we're going to learn some good things here and, and then move it forward in, in that way. And I think it's going to be beneficial there, so.
You know, Dr. Law, I need to add one more thing. The only reason on that item B that I would want one of the laypeople to sit in on that process is if there is any... process is if there is any person that has issue with why they weren't moved forward from that particular point, that one of those people could explain to them why they were deficient, because it's easy for staff to do that, but it's harder to, when a layperson sits there and says, well, you, you didn't, you didn't muster up here.
Yep. And, and I'm being, this is, experience matters here. On more than a couple of occasions, companies that, on the surface, look robust and healthy, when you actually get into the financial statements, they, they create a level of nervousness. Maybe not have hit the edge yet, but, and we don't want that to be a public dialogue or anything else, but that's the due diligence that I think a staff and, and that, that part should do, okay?
I agree. So, with that, Dr. Law, you have anything else? Mr. Brett, Captain Fahn? I think we're ready to vote on these two items with the changes that Dr. Law and I have both requested, unless you all have issue with any one of those.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We're on to item E3, which is the library.
Here again, there are, there are two pieces here. We are start, Doug, didn't, didn't we have a, a schedule that we put together for, for how we're doing this?
I have the schedule.
How about, is it somewhere where we can, where we can call it up?
I think they have everything on that computer.
Let's see what you can do over there. One of the other things that the board had asked, and I, I'm sorry, I thought we had this ready to show, is that you get a sense of how we're managing the projects.
Right.
Mr. Brett, you had asked me to do this, and we have that, okay? And we'll see, Doug probably has it in, in his SharePoint folder. You are being asked today to, to support the RFQ for architectural services, and we'll bring that back. Let me take one more minute, though, on that. It is my assessment that we can get a great deal more service out of our architectural firms by being more demanding for them. They should be handling much more of the early discussion, the, the bubble diagrams, the space utilization, the newest ideas from across America, the, the process of all the interested groups. This is what the best architectural firms do. This is what they do when you're getting the highest level of service, not just draw blueprints. They, they do this kind of work for how things flow together, what, how that works. And I'm going to demand a great deal more of the architectural firms in that process. In the past, we've done a great deal of the work and handed that to the architect and said, now draw this, okay? We, in fact, that was really one of the awkward moments we had in the Midtown project, as you recall. Not that our staff can't do that, but architects are trained to do this. They go to national meetings, they read magazines every day, they talk to their colleagues, they monitor projects. They bring new ideas in, they challenge us, they put us in touch with other colleges. So, please be aware, we're going to demand more of the architects. By the way, they get paid the same whether you make the demand on them or not. So, that's part of, of what we're doing here. And are we going to be able to pull up a?
No, but I can run through it.
We'll, we'll send it out to you. Mr. Brett, please understand, we, we did put together where you would see how you will interact with this project over the next coming months. We're, we're starting to group the discussions to each of the, to two or three times, so you know what you're approving at which point, okay?
Mr. Brett, Dr. Law, I have not seen any previous RFQs for architectural services. I looked at this one. So, the, the ask that you are making of the potential winner of this, of this bid, those items are incorporated into this RFQ, so this is a, kind of a little different ask than what has been brought forward in the past?
Yes. We, we will ask them to, I forget where we, in the weighting schema.
It's in there.
We will ask them to, to tell us how they do that. What, what is your capacity for doing these kinds of things? You'd be surprised, the herd separates pretty quickly at that level, Mr. Brett. You know, some are really good at drawing, and some are much more process oriented. Here, here's what we want to, thank you very much.
And just one other question, just related to this. Where are we on Susan's replacement?
We will be bringing you a revised organizational piece for that. Doug and I have been putting a great deal of time in on that. Having advertised and not had a successful search, we went back to the drawing board. We believe we can rearrange the reporting responsibilities and perhaps save as much as $200,000 in, in that area by reassigning some mid-level staff and then making a single associate vice president rather than a vice president. We think it'll be highly effective. We think it will give us a chance to promote some very good local talent, and in addition, save perhaps $200,000. That's the number I'm willing to say out loud. It may be more. It's a work in progress.
Okay.
We'll bring that to you next month, okay? But thank you for your patience on that, okay? Mr. Brett, members of the board, you see, this is the schedule for the RFQ. This isn't even the, at February 19th, you'll, you'll make the board selection for this process. The, I don't have a good feel for what the, what the schedule for the library is. I'm not feeling quite as much pressure yet. We, we have to spend much more time early on determining what do we want in a library? What does it mean to be joint partners? It's a much more complex, I think a more fun discussion, but we'll get an architect on board by February, and then we can start that process with our, our colleagues from the library and some other things to, to get that going. We'll give you a schedule as soon as we get working on that. It's not burning a hole in me quite the way the Midtown, the Midtown one, if we want that to open in August, you have to take the actions that you did last month and today, if we want that to open next August. This one could, could delay six months, and it wouldn't hurt my feelings if we get the right library, okay?
Can you refresh my memory, financing for this project?
You wrote a check for it in, in January.
That's one.
Okay. And then the City of Clearwater is going to be a participant, and we're still determining at that level, but it's a significant participation, several millions of dollars.
Right.
Okay? So, both of these are doable with our own resources.
Right, that's why I'm just driving out of here.
Yes, no, so, please, give us just a little bit. This one is, we do not know what a library needs to be. We do not, all of this work we're doing on out-of-class support and learning centers and all of that, we're trying to incorporate all of that into our best thinking. There are some services in that old ad building that, that maybe if we can squeeze them in, we want to do that. So, give us a little leeway on this. We're going to get an architect on board to help us with those discussions, and we'll keep you informed over the spring months, okay?
Mr. Brett?
Just regarding item 3B on the memo of understanding, is this substantively different from our joint use agreement with the City of St. Petersburg here? Is it kind of the same?
I'm going to have to ask somebody who, who has compared those. Joe?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. We have not gotten to that point yet. As the memo states, really essentially, there are two points. This is the pre-planning. This is just getting us the opportunity to move the process forward. And then, secondly, you know, both entities can de-commit from this at any time, but we have not talked about how it would look as compared to Seminole or the City of St. Petersburg. We're not at that point right now.
This is so we can, they got to make the commitment of finances, so they probably need a document that authorizes that commitment, okay? I think we shared this at the end of last board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, okay. Both are good projects. Thank you for your support. Shouldn't be this hard, but it's worth doing.
I'd like to move approval for items 7, 3, A and B.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all signify, is there any discussion? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. Dr. Law, I do have one comment, I'll tell you. I, I really appreciate this process.
Thank you.
I do. I'm with Mr. Brett. We have never seen this before, ever, and I think we're making some very good changes, not to micromanage, but at least to know. It helps us to know. The other thing is, I would imagine that the, we're going to get some very good data from what we've learned at the St. Pete Library and the Seminole campus of changes we need to make or things we need to leave the same, so. But I will tell you, I don't want to slow down on this. I, I think that this is just as important. We have a obligation, a fiduciary responsibility to serve all the citizens of, of the county, not just in the county, but our students as well, on Clearwater, St. Pete, Midtown, Downtown, Tarpon, I didn't forget Tarpon, Dr. Carney. But, and I think we need to be full steam ahead. So, thank you again on, on this item, and thanks for all who worked on this particular item, because it is very critical, and as, as Mr. Brett has been saying for a very long time, it's much needed. We need to make sure that we have folks that actually understand what we do here at the college and how we serve people.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, so we're on to the next item here. The agency building is none administrative matters. Dr. Law, we can?
Human resources report.
Yeah, I think we can just take these up.
We did a minor adjustment there, but all good?
Yep. Financial report.
You need to take a vote on the personnel matter, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
When Terry comes back.
We do this in the interior.
All right, okay.
Mr. Brett comes back, we'll take them up.
Good morning. It's hard to believe we're a third of the way through the, the fiscal year, but, but given that, I think it, at this point, financial trends start becoming a little bit more meaningful and, and as you see them, them develop. Right now, what you're seeing is our, our year-to-date chart of revenue and expense. Right now, our tuition and fees are trending at right around 3% below budget, and again, that's all a factor of, of enrollment. Our total expenses are about $150,000 below where we anticipated them to be, but now's the time, obviously, that, that we need to start then looking at that gap and, and making plans to, to address spending issues as we go forward. We do have a healthy surplus, though, of 8.7 million, which is about where we usually are at this, at this point in the year. You can see that the, the, the month-over-month data is a little bit misleading, because it's actually showing a, a large jump in, in revenue for this month, but I want to point out there that we started enrollment, or we started the registration for spring in the last week of October this year, so that revenue was showing up in October. Last year, it didn't show up until, until November, so just a minor point there. Our administrative costs are trending down as we expected. You may recall from the budget that we did reallocate a number of administrative positions to student support and instructional areas, so we're seeing that start to, to take hold now. And our, our current expenses are also about 2% below where we expected to be at this point in the year, so. With that said, that's a summary, any questions?
Well, I don't have any.
Straightforward.
Yeah, very straightforward. Yeah. So, we'll, we'll make it on Mr. Brett and go through these two or three here. I guess I can open the public hearing for the, oh, there he is.
No rules?
There's none. Open it and close it.
You don't have to open it.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, we're fine. I don't need a motion for, oh, go ahead, Mr. Brett.
Make motion for G1A and 2A.
Second.
So, it's been properly moved that we accept item G1 and 2. All in fa, any sudden discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposing. We're on to academic matters, item H. Medical laboratory program closure.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President. As you can see, we are recommending that at this time, we discontinue our medical lab technology program. One of the reasons for this is that the ability to place our students in clinical options so that they can complete their program have decreased greatly. We have gone from 30 options in regards to the clinical placements to 10. This, of course, then prevents the program from being able to grow. We cannot accept more students, and so, at this time, we are recommending that we close the program and then look at other options within the emerging health fields to see if there is something that would be better for us to be offering to our students and to our community at this time.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Item H1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We're on to, thank you, Dr. Cooper. I'm going to open the proposed changes to the board rules.
There are none.
There are none, so I'm going to close it as well. Since it's public speaking, right?
He just wants you to say.
Yeah. President's report.
Mr. Chairman, under separate cover, I will provide you with probably more than you want to know, but we are, I want to assure you that the college is enthusiastically and actively implementing the decision in the Ruiz case, which was, went to the Florida Supreme Court, which said that, it's hard for me to even talk about this, because it was so off-base, but students who come to us, who are citizens, will get in-state tuition, no matter what the residency status of their parents. In Florida, we had an unfortunate situation where students who were born in this country, they are citizens of the United States, just, they, they sat in school next to our kids and everything else, were not to be designated as in-state, depending upon the residency status of their parents. That was overturned, and we are now in the process of making certain that, that, that we remediate that in our processes and, and the intake of all of that. So, we, we, I'm glad we're doing that. It's hard for me to tell you that a, that a kid born in the U.S., graduate of Clearwater High, valedictorian of the class, walks across the street to come to our campus, and then we're going to say, sorry, you're an out-of-state student, so that, that, I perceive that as, as a wrong net has been righted. Others can see it differently, for sure, so, just wanted to make you know that.
There's no retroactive actions that have to happen.
No, everybody, well, those who may already have, we're not going to reimburse people, but going forward, we, we have everybody. We had a duty to notify everybody. It's not always transparent on its face. They were having trouble identifying who it is, so we are in the process of making notice to everyone. That will create a little bit of ripple, I suspect, but please know that we are in full compliance with the directive of the courts, okay? And then, lastly, we continue, this, this is the part I love, because every time people think I only care about workforce, then I can share something on the humanities and higher-order thinking, and we have the Metta Journal that is, is a work of our Honors Program.
I'd like to introduce Nadia Yostigneva, the Director of our Honors College and Program, who's going to share a little bit about how the Metta Journal came into being.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. I would like to present members of the board, and I'm very proud to present members of the board with a copy of the inaugural volume of Metta, an interdisciplinary journal. This publication is the result of the Silverbrook Endowment for Academic Excellence in conjunction with Communication Department and Center for Excellence in Teaching and Learning. We received over 500 submissions from our talented students, faculty, and alumni, and the editorial board selected 94 works for the first volume. The variety of selections includes creative writing, poetry, photography, artwork, and research papers. We appreciate everyone who worked and played a part in this project, and we would especially like to recognize our dedicated faculty editor-in-chief from the Seminole campus, Dr. Julia Rawa, and our outstanding student editor, Eric Bang. Thank you very much.
Wow.
This is fabulous.
This is great.
Oh, no, this is great. Congratulations, very nice.
Thank you. This is for editorial board and everybody who took part in that.
Oh, my Lord. Beautiful. Very nice.
It's phenomenal, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Future agenda, does anybody have any of those?
Nope.
Dr. Law, everything?
We will reach out to have whatever discussion is appropriate as we plan for the workshop at the December meeting, okay? I, it would be nice if we had five members at the workshop, so we don't have to do it all twice, but we.
How is that coming? Or not coming?
Or not coming. I wish I could.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that answer.
You heard my, although we have been persistent with the governor, we apparently have not annoyed him enough that he's not, he's still coming to visit, so.
Yeah, I don't think he's mad.
So, he's not mad at us yet, but we're working on that, okay?
Although, he did tell me to cut my beard.
Yeah, right. I know he has been working pretty diligently on that, and we just can't quite get to the finish line. It's imminent.
Yeah, we, Dr. Law, I will tell you, Dr. Law and I have probably cornered him at every possible place we could. Tallahassee, in his book, everywhere, so, but he, I think, I think he's heard us. In fact, I just don't know, you know, where they are on all the appointments across the state, but I think that he's just, I think he's going to be more engaged, as opposed to letting the chief of staff make the decisions this time, would you say that, Dr. Law? From our discussion with him, he didn't even know what happened in one of the situations that were related to our board. He just had a recommendation, and he moved it forward, so I think you'll see some movement here, maybe first of the year. With that, I'm going to end the meeting. Have a happy holiday. Don't eat too much turkey, and thank you for all you've done up to this point. We really appreciate all of you. Thank you.